Now, approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover please, Mr. Packwood?
I'll second that.
Counselor Dillabong? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, carried. Any disclosure of the community area issues and the general nature thereof?
None by me.
Hearing none, thank you.
Just before I go on, Mr. Chairman, just had an email from or a text message from Deputy Mayor Deschamps. It'd be a long short tape.
Yes, thank you. Business arising from the committee of the whole, the previous committee of the whole minutes, if any, have been circulated, you have them in your package? Any questions, concerns?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Yeah, to the, to the clerk. The, the two recorded votes, I noticed the formatting comes out kind of crazy. Is there a way of correcting that?
There is, I didn't notice that when it was printed off for this agenda. It's just the margins flipped a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep, we can change that.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Okay.
No, no, that's it. Hearing nothing else, we'll, we'll move along, thank you. There is no delegations or presentations. Discussion items, none. So we move on to section seven, action and information item. And the first one up is the first quarter fire, fire report. And Chief Moore, do you have anything to highlight here?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Just a few things under updates, obviously, our non-emergency activities were suspended in the middle of March through the, for the pandemic. Luckily, up until this weekend, it has been fairly uneventful. Under training, there, there was 237 online training courses completed in the first quarter. And we had 10 firefighters finish up first aid, CPR, and basic life support certification. We had a countywide burn ban implemented on March the 25th. And we had a very successful pancake breakfast, their second one, with over 300 in attendance. And while I'm here, I'd just like to thank Counselor Hunter for his support once again this year, very generous. Burn permits, we did send out a notification this year for, for all the account holders to renew their permits. And then on to page three is the registered burn map, along with a graph of the burn permit activations. Obviously, towards the right-hand side, you can see where the burn ban went into effect and the activation stopped. And on page, page four, we did receive resignation of two personnel in Q1. Bill Barnard with 40 years of service and Rob Belton.
Wow, 40 years, he'd be hard to replace. Uh-huh, Rob Belton, how many years did he have?
Off the top of my head, I would think I would guess five.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Chief Moore?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
On our calls of the month, Chief? Assistance not required, five, cancel en route, four, that's nine calls, is that nine calls we won't get paid for?
Through the chair, I can't tell you if those nine calls involve the MTO, they could be calls anywhere in the township. But if those calls were MTO calls, then the answer would be yes.
And if they weren't, would we still get paid, like assistance not required, do we care?
Through the chair, no.
We wouldn't get paid then?
Correct.
Okay. And, excuse me. And our, just one other thing, is our amount of members were quite low on station two, I see. Is there any 17 men, I think, in station two, is that right?
That is correct.
Any chance of recruiting or what's the outlook there? More the mayor, right? That's what we need to see.
Absolutely, we've moved to kind of an annual, an annual recruitment so that we can start, start our recruit training together with, you know, the maximum amount of people to make it more efficient. So we will be actively recruiting again this summer, hoping to hire some people in the fall.
Thank you. Yeah, so going back to that calls by month, I'm, I'm just following up on the question from Counselor Dillabong. Assistant, so assistance not required and canceled en route, are they not both specifically related to MTO? Both those categories?
Through the chair, no.
Well, they're not.
No.
Trying to think of what situation would prevail where we would get a call inside the township where it would get canceled en route or assistance, where we would get a call and be going out and assistance wouldn't be required. Can you, are there, can you give me an example of when that would happen?
Certainly, through the chair, any, any kind of a medical call, we would get dispatched to a medical call. EMS may arrive on scene ahead of us, advise dispatch that one unrequired.
Okay, alright.
Or, in the same token, if we do arrive and they say they've got it handled, then that's the difference between canceled en route and assistance not required.
Alright, so, okay, appreciate that.
But the, the MTO payment that we, that we apply for and get, they're only for the 400 series highways, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, so if a car had a situation on County Route 44 and we were called, that wouldn't be classified as, as MTO?
Correct.
Thank you. I have a, I have a brief question, but I'll, I'll come back to it. So, Mr. Packwood, do you have any questions for the chief? Mr. Hunter?
Just one question on our, through the chair, to our chief and our staffing. As we mentioned, Cardinal Station is low in numbers for what we're looking to keep online all the time now. We have a 26 in Spenceville. How are we doing? It was brought up years ago when I was on council, I never really figured whoever never got carried through on. Are volunteer firefighters, are we requiring them to have a medical certificate all the time to remain on active duty on fire department?
Through the chair, no, we, we ask for a doctor's note upon hire. But after that, it would basically just be their medicals required for their, for their license. So we do not require a medical certificate.
Would you not think that would be something that, especially with, you know, in the Spenceville station there, we've got quite a few guys that are up there in years? And if they're going out in an active call, we wouldn't require if they're going to stay active to some kind of a medical assurance that is not going to cause a medical problem on scene?
I agree with you, Counselor Hunter. Getting back to our, our earlier conversation about the numbers, that's certainly probably not going to help our, our membership. Of course, their health and safety is, is primary. If that's something that council would like, like to pursue, we can definitely go that way.
This is kind of putting us in a bad situation. We have guys that really aren't physically able to be doing, doing it. I don't mind seeing them being on the fire department if they're, if they're standing running the, running the pump or something like that. But being on, actively fighting fires when you get certain, at certain age, I think you really should have some kind of a medical thing saying they're capable of being there. You know, most professional firefighters have clear medical, every year they have to have full medical report, so.
Something to look at down the road?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, welcome aboard, by the way.
Thank you, sorry, sorry for my late answer.
No, not a problem.
I'm still adapting to the homeschooling portion of my life, of my life. No, no questions.
Okay. Then I just have one, Chief Moore, and that is, under your training, the very first, very first work point, you mentioned that one joint training at Glen Smale Road House. Now, was that a, was that a mock fire, a simulated fire at the house? And was the house raised or was it just something else?
Thank you, that, that's a house that belongs to HFI Pyrotechnics that they've allowed us to utilize for training. The training we did that night was firefighter survival.
Okay. And that, and you use that quite often, do you?
That is correct.
Thank you, that's, that's all I have. Anything else? Okay, there's no recommendations, so we'll just move on to number 7B, which is the first quarter's facilities maintenance report, and I believe, Mr. Spencer, can you highlight some things here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Below is just a list of items that we have worked on, or, and then the last page is just a, an update of some of the things that we are currently working on and will be over the next couple of weeks. I'll just highlight a couple. Both libraries were inspected in, in March, have their furnaces, it's just based on our maintenance program that we have, with no issues to report. Ingredion, again, the elevator lift was inspected by the TSAA. We did have an ammonia leak in the compressor room in January, and that was part of the report that you had last month regarding some of the extra cost for refrigeration at, at the arenas. Portable defibrillators are tested, I, I've been indicated that they're all in good shape. We also have one here at the town hall, but there was nothing else done for maintenance, so I didn't indicate that there. But they are all tested monthly to ensure that they are all in working order. At the Spenceville Arena, the TSAA was in and did their surprise inspection. The only thing that they had suggested is that we have a lockout-tagout system solely for the compressor room. Where before, we've had one for the whole building. So now we have a separate lockout-tagout for the compressor room. And we purchased two when we put one in the Cardinal Arena, it wasn't required, but it, it'll get inspected eventually sometime in the next six months. And they would ask for the same thing, so we put one in there as well. Johnstown Community Center, just indicating that Able Pest Control was in to do their monthly inspection of their bait traps. And then the work plan on the bottom of page two and then page three just talks about some of the items that, as I indicated, that we are doing. Some things are on delay right now as, including the outhouses. And we haven't opened up the washroom down at the Cardinal Legion. And that will all depend on the upcoming requirements as of the COVID-19 hanging baskets. They are ordered and they will be going up probably Thursday or Friday this week. And we'll be planting the mega bed as well this week or early next week. Daily inspections of the parks to ensure the play structures remain off limits, that continues. There are people using them. This one over here beside the arena here, yesterday had the caution tape and the signs all taken down and, and kids on it. So we put them back up again this morning. And then I'm just indicating on the bottom, just sitting in on different Zoom meetings with Hockey Canada and other areas to look at the, the arena side of opening up whenever they do, what will be required and what will be allowed and that. So, some interesting things coming forward there. So, that's all unless there's any questions.
Okay, I'll start with Council Dillabong, any, any concerns or questions?
None by me at this time, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have several. First thing, the prognosis with regard to the rinks opening in August. What are we hearing from the Hockey Federation?
Well, right now, I'm sitting on a return to play task force with HEO Ottawa Hockey. And they're coming up, well, we're coming up with three scenarios. One is a September start date, an November start date, or no start date for next season. And that's all going to be based on what Hockey Canada says. Hockey Canada will put out requirements set out, but each province is going to be different. They're not going to have a mandated Hockey Canada across the board because every province is dealing with the COVID-19 with different numbers. So Saskatchewan, which has probably one of the lowest of, of the provinces, their arenas potentially could open in August. But there's potential that they may not either. They're in phase two right now, and my sister works for, in Estevan, Saskatchewan, Munson Arena. And phase four is where they'll have to get in order for her to be able to open up their arena. And they're in just, they just started phase two today. So phase four doesn't have a deadline, a timeframe as to when they're going to. And again, each province is different, I, I understand that, but Hockey Canada potentially, they're going to listen to the, to the provinces first. So each province could be different, each municipality could be different. And that's one of the things that was discussed, that you could have arenas in Ottawa that may open, but then you could have some in the outline areas that that may not open. There's also discussion that there may be some links that may not open because of the cost of having extra staff in them. It's a ongoing.
So is every, is every association taking, through the chair, is every association taking their complete and total guidance from the provincial association or from Hockey Canada, the federal association?
Through the chair, anyone that's associated with Hockey Canada, which would be probably 85% of our users, are in one way or another associated with Hockey Canada, they have to take their instructions from them. The only ones that would not, the figure skating would be different. Normally, they go in line with what Hockey Canada, but I mean, last week's Ontario government has allowed figure skating to start. Now, that's not to say that they're going to, but figure skating is on the list of items that were allowed to, to start back. They may not find an arena to be able to do it in right now. But girls hockey and, and youth hockey is all under the umbrella of Hockey Canada.
So that's the first question, Mr. Chairman, go ahead and I'll come back and talk about some others here.
Okay, I'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Sure, a couple. Through the chair to Mike, great job getting the docks arranged, they look, they look great. I was very happy to see them in and haven't received anything of positive feedback in regard to those. Question, and maybe I just misunderstood, but I thought that the crane, when the crane was here to install those, that it would install the accessible dock at the same time. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Through the chair. Our equipment, we, we use Norton Crane rentals, and that's not who we used last week, we used our own last week.
Okay.
So the, the plan will be to, when the other set of docks are ready to go in, that we would put in the, we would get the crane rental company to do it. It's because they have the sides up on that, and so that's why we use the crane and they can reach out further.
We used our fridge, yeah, she used our own to get those ones in.
That is correct, yes.
The other question through the chair again would be the lights, the installation of lights in the Ingredion Center?
Yes.
I assume the new ones are up and working well and everything. What did we do with the, with the old ones? And do we keep them as backups, is there somebody who's looking for them? I know we entertained the idea or the possibility of looking to find more like those and we couldn't. So is there somebody out there who's looking for ones like ours so that we can dispose of them in that manner, or have we already disposed of them?
We've already disposed of them.
Okay.
We have the ones for the Spenceville Arena still, and we have no takers on them either.
And last one, Mr. Chair, if I can, it's just more of a compliment again, Mike, for the Zoom training, for the reopening. Your involvement in that, I think, is very helpful for forming a plan for the recreational facilities. And, and the impacts of, you know, basically what that revenue is going to, you know, that revenue stream could change a lot. And, you know, doing your training and your meetings will help guide through that, so, you know, well done and keep going.
Thank you.
Counselor Hunter?
Through the chair, our facility manager, being the Spenceville Arena is definitely not going to be open at times it always did open. Have you received any feedback from a Spenceville fair about what they're doing? Are they planning, still trying to plan on a fair or are they canceling? It could make a difference in preparation of the arena and stuff too.
Through the chair, I, I have not heard anything. I, I reached out to Jeff Rodeck last week, not on that issue, on another issue, and we weren't able to communicate with each other. So I'll touch base with him this week. I certainly will ask the question, but I haven't heard. I know other area fairs have been canceled. My thought was that if it was canceled and if Hockey Canada was going to allow arenas to open up, that potentially we wouldn't be able to have that, this one open earlier than normal. But again, that's all going to determine on whether or not Hockey Canada is going to allow the kids to come back.
Also, one more. When you're talking to HEO, I know there's been a lot of speculation about them start, start, starting up, that there's going to be no, no parents in the dressing room, no parents in the arena. Kids only putting their skates on when they arrive to the hockey, hockey rink, no crowding dressing in dressing rooms and so far, and I know you're involved in refereeing and everything through the association heavily. I've heard a lot of comments from parents, well, if it's going to be a three-on-three hockey and you've got to dress home and come there, we're not registering for, for hockey. So if this does take place, what's going to be the feasibility of us actually renting the, these rinks? Because of the associations, like I know Toronto Association, one of them, I've read in a thing there, expecting 50 to 60% drop in recreational registration. How is it going to be feasible to us to operate a, a rink? Because if they, I would assume that most recreations, if they can only get a 50 or 40 or maybe 50% registration, they're not going to be able to afford, afford to rent ice time. Those numbers, so.
Through the chair, there certainly has, has been discussion regarding the three-on-three, four-on-four, five-on-five. I mean, ultimately, HEO would, would like to see the five-on-five. There was certainly some discussion about potentially, if it was three-on-three or four-on-four, potentially allowing it to be five-on-five and having no parents. Like the board, you know, the discussions around the table were that we would prefer to have more kids on the ice than more kid, more parents watching. So if there was an opportunity to have five-on-five hockey, which is what ultimately everyone wants, you may have that, but potentially have less fans or less parents in, in the building. So, again, there's so much, so many moving parts right now, but there certainly has been the discussion. And I indicated earlier in my discussion, I indicated that there were some rinks that may not open, and that could be the reason why. Because the registration may not be there for some programs to be offered, to be able to offer, depending on what Hockey Canada says you can or can't do, right?
I know Skate Canada, as you've mentioned, is authorized, the high-level skaters can, they're eligible to go on, go on ice. But I know through our own experience, there's no ice to go on.
That's correct.
So.
Oh, and that's why I was surprised, sorry, through the chair, that's why I was surprised to see that on the list. Because in order for the figure skaters to be able to participate, they have to be in an arena. And I was rather surprised because there's no guidelines as to what the arenas should do and shouldn't do when, when they open up to start. So that's why I was quite surprised myself.
Really, basically, what arena, what municipality can afford to open or, open an arena for figure skating? Because it's just minimal hours that they're going to be, be booking, so.
Well, and you're right, and there was, there was also discussion, for example, if, if a local group rents an hour of hockey, then potentially that they would have to rent the hour and a half. So that it would be 10 minutes to clear out of the building, 10 minutes for staff to do a quick clean, and then 10 minutes for the next group to come in, which would be the hour and a half. So, and then who's going to absorb that cost, that extra half hour rental?
Go, go ahead. But this gets us back to the main issue. The main issue here is, are we just going to stand by and let Hockey Canada? I mean, I know they're the governing body, but is there no common sense here someplace that we've got to get these, these buildings back open again? And we've got to get, we've got to get the kids back on the ice? I mean, is there not somebody that's saying we can do this without being so extreme, going to three-on-three and no parents in the building? I mean, what kind of foolishness is that? I mean, you might just, there won't be an arena open if you go to that extreme. So is not, is nobody that's on the ice with the kids saying, listen, we can find other ways of doing this? As of this point in time, I had the statistic here just the other day, can't remember it now off the top of my head. Between two and eight, ages between two and 18, the incidence of COVID is something like less than 0.01%. Kids don't catch it, or if they do, they catch it and get over it. So is nobody standing up for the kids here, saying, I mean, this, this, this is the kind of thing that can absolutely kill municipalities? Without, and I mean, are we, are we just, are we just folding our tent here? That's what I'm asking, where's the pushback coming?
So, so through, through, through the chair, to be, to be fair, it, it is May 19th? And, and there's lots of discussions and, and options and everything on, on the table? And, you know, the, the more information that we can get over the coming month or so, have a better idea that, you know, we can, we can look to, to formulate a, a better plan.
So, so through the chair, full kudos to, to Mr. Grant for getting us out of that discussion. But I'm going to put us right back into another one, which is pools.
Go ahead.
Well, I haven't seen anything in this report about pools yet.
I'll come back to you.
And that is not so far away. But if I recall correctly, did I, do I not recall a previous meeting where the drop dead date for making a decision in the pools is?
June 1st.
Come, come, what was it?
June 1st, I do believe it was.
Was it June 1st?
And, and the facility manager can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a, it's about a three-week timeframe to get, to get the pools ready at that time, so I, I want to say that it was close to around the June 1st timeline, that, that a decision has to be made to have that, to have those facilities open for, around July 1st.
So that's two weeks, so.
Two weeks. So we still got some time left there. And I agree, I agree with Mr. Grant, I mean, I guess we shouldn't be spinning our wheels on this stuff that's, still got some lag here.
There's still a future here.
Yeah, there's still a future, potential future.
I just want to, just before I go to Deputy Mayor again, I just want to, Mr. Packwood, do you have anything?
Questions are already going to ask and answered, thank you.
And Mr. Bush? Okay, Deputy Mayor, you have, you wanted to get in here?
Through the chair. CAO certainly said it pretty much exactly what I was going to say, and if there's one thing that I've witnessed recently is that, is that there's so much speculation and people spinning their wheels and planning for things that the restriction and the guidelines haven't been announced yet. You know, we can, we can plan all we want, and it's great to have three or four different possibilities set out. But if they don't meet their, the regulation or the restrictions, then all that planning's for naught. So until we know those, I think if we're going to put pressure on, it makes sense to put the pressure on in getting those restrictions more than a week before they expect to open facilities or, or businesses. If there's one thing that I've seen over the last little bit, it's that the, the timeframe that they've given for reopenings is very, very short.
Too short.
It's very short, yeah. So like if they're thinking we're going to open in September, we should, what I would suggest is that, you know, if, if we're planning on opening for September, let's start pushing them now for a September opening date and what the restrictions would be for that, for that opening date. So that, you know, we don't plan things like having no parents in. So, you know, we don't plan things like having no parents in the building when, when that may not actually be a restriction. So, if, uh, any suggestion would be that?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Hunter.
I, uh, maybe ask one other question here. I, I know we're cat-plan too far, far ahead. But if we keep all the social distance, it's what it looks like, even when we open, they're gonna be talking this. Should we, our Facility Manager and us be sitting, looking at a plan with reduced use and stuff? Maybe we, we only open an ingredient center that has a larger space and, and larger dressing rooms to start with, with the lower demand, until we see whether we can afford to run, run two rinks at the same time?
Good, good discussion.
If Spencel Arena operates great in the system we worry in, but in the new system, we're not gonna be able to have very many people in there at one time, I mean, social distance. Ingredient Center's a lot bigger, a lot bigger dressing rooms. If we maintain this, maybe we shouldn't be thinking at the start of the year that we concentrate on maybe opening one arena with the option of, say, lower restrictions, that we open the second arena when the demand warrants to get it open.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, that's excellent advice for Mr. Spencer to keep in the back of his mind as, as, as we move forward. Um, I just have a couple of questions, uh, and not about the arenas, uh, but it's about the, the washrooms at the, at the Cardinal Canteen. Um, there was some discussion here about whether or not the locks for those, are they a timed lock on those washroom doors?
Yes, they are.
They, okay. So if the, if the need came about to open those, they, they, they could be timed to open and close at certain times?
Yes, last summer, the, they were, they opened at, uh, eight o'clock in the mornings, and they closed at, I believe, we had it set to close at nine o'clock at night.
Now, was that, was that seven days a week?
Yes, that was.
Oh, okay. It's, and the reason I'm asking, uh, Mr. Spencer is the fact that I walk down there quite a bit, and I've had people ask me if, when the washrooms can be opened. Of course, there's no answer at the moment.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the other, the other items that I have regard, uh, the boat docks. The new boat docks look fantastic, they're, excellent job, well done. However, on the old docks, I noticed that there's still some hardware left there, such as the cleats to tie up boats. And on the new docks, there's only four, two on, two on each of the two L-type, um, um, docks. Could we not take some of the old hardware and put more cleats on the, on the new docks?
Well, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think that we had asked for a report about the old floating docks, uh, going up to the other location.
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right.
And I just don't wanna get the, starting to take the old docks apart until we have an opportunity to go to that report.
Okay, I get.
I think that report is probably gonna come for May twenty-fifth, is it not?
Uh, through, through the Chair, the, the, the plan was for it to come at the June committee meeting.
The June committee meeting?
That's a month from now, yes.
So, whoa, hang on a second.
That, that's a pretty good length of time.
Uh, can we not deal with that sooner than that? Through the Chair?
Well, the, the, yes, I, 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 I suppose it can be brought up to, to, uh, at, at council on, on May twenty-fifth. But, um, the, the, the difficulty is that the, the agenda prep, we have a number of items on there, and then, you know, trying, trying to get stuff done in, in, in a short turnaround to produce a fulsome report, um, that, that extra time would be helpful. But if, if it's the will of committee to, to have it at May twenty-fifth, we'll, we'll do, do a report for May twenty-fifth.
I don't know where I got the, I just had the impression that that's when I would be seeing it, because it wasn't on this report. Um, so further to that then, uh, is there any plan to open the concession at the, uh, at, at the Legion Way? Because that's, uh, I mean, I'm trying to think, do we not generally open it on the May twenty-fourth weekend, which is now past this? We know that certain retail stores are already opening today, and as a matter of fact, uh, some retail stores that were doing takeouts, I mean, restaurants that are doing takeouts are already open. Anything that was doing takeouts is already open. So what is the plan to get that concession open?
Um, I, I believe, um, the Treasurer had indicated in her report on the cash flow situation that at the present time, there was no plans to open up our summer canteen or either pool, either of the pools.
What's that?
The Treasurer had presented, I believe, at the last Indian Finance Committee meeting, um, a cash flow scenario. And in that, it indicated that summer students were not going to be hired for either pool or the canteen.
Well, that was a.
But that was due to COVID-nineteen, I, I assumed.
That is correct.
Um, but if, if some of the stores can be open, why can't our canteen be open? That is, would be my, would be my question.
How much money do you want to lose? Because it's not gonna make any money, there's no, no demand for it.
Well, that, well, that's, that's a guess as good as.
We complained about being out two thousand dollars last year in the canteen. You open that canteen for the summer with the demand you're gonna have down there, you're gonna be at a lot, one, two thousand dollars.
Why is.
Well, how, how can you, how can you make that prediction?
Because you gotta hire staff to be in there, you gotta, you're gonna have to provide social distance for your restaurant. You're gonna have to meet all kinds of demands in, in there to meet the COVID-nineteen and health regu- regulations that we don't meet in there now.
So in other words, is the interpretation of that report that we had mean, are we to interpret that report to mean that we're not gonna be doing anything this summer? Is that the interpretation that I'm taking? Because if that's the case, then I'd wanna have a look at that report again. I didn't take that interpretation from that report. I mean, I don't, I don't understand what we're doing here.
So we're a long way away from ever getting any approval for the pools open.
Well.
No, but the canteen can be separated from the pool.
A little bit different. The voters, the voters are out, uh, um, people are down there on the weekends. Uh, people are practicing social distancing. I've already had requests about washrooms being open, it would be, and, and I totally understand why they're not open at this point in time. But somewhere in the next three weeks to a month, I'm quite sure that the, that when phase two kicks in, there's certain businesses that are going to be open again. Uh, there's no more than two, two staff members in the canteen at any one time. Uh, I, I just can't believe that people are gonna stop asking for ice cream and hot dogs when they, when they start frequenting our parks. But.
I mean, parks are open for walkers, and it's only a question of time until they're open. I mean, I've, I've, I'm, I've asked the, um, the medical officer of health about the plate structure equipment, and I got that answer, I understand that, but people are using it anyway, and they're just taking the tapes off and using it. I've also asked about the benches, and as of the last time that I, that we talked to her, she recommended that the benches stay closed, but it's only a question of time until those benches are open. No reason that people can't have a bench to sit on. We haven't put out the benches in the, in the community yet. I mean, uh, there's three or four different places around the villages where we put single benches, or we put out double or triple benches, but that doesn't mean to say there has to be double or triple people sitting on them. I mean, are, are we, are we living off that Treasurer's report that we saw at the Indian Finance Committee meeting? Or are we using some common sense here to go along with it?
Through the Chair, I, I'm not sure, is that, is, is, is that directed at staff or?
It's, uh, no, no, it's not a, it's not directed at any place right now, it's a, it's a, actually, it, it is. It's directed at council. Council is the one that makes the decision.
I, 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 I believe that report from Indian Finance is going to come forward to council next week for approval.
Uh, yes, I think.
So we can, we can certainly have discussion at that particular point in time. And I, I think, you know, I would, I would strongly suggest it. We have, uh, we have some answers as to, uh, as, and, and this is directed at staff. Uh, some answers for, for that, just what we've heard around the table. Um, because I, when I read that report, I was, I was assuming that was connected solely with COVID-nineteen. And not a, not a total shutdown, but.
Deputy Mayor Watson?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, through, through the Chair, just a couple of comments. Um, uh, one, uh, until, you know, we, I think one of the biggest issues that we're going to have, um, uh, I think coming out of that Treasurer's report is that pools are, are closed unless we, we decide to, uh, open them. Uh, and we had until the second last week of June, I think is the way that we said it, uh, to, to make that decision. But in my thinking, one of the biggest problems that we're going to have is every, every student that, that wanted to collect CERB is collecting CERB. And, and I think when we put out our notices for students, uh, I'm not sure if, if, uh, Facility Manager has done that, but when we put that out, I'm, I'm guessing that we're going to have a lack of, a lack of sta- a lack of staff uh, for those facilities if, if they were even to, uh, or even if there was a possibility of, of them opening. I mean, it's usually, I think, I think it's usually, uh, staffed by mostly students. Um, and, and so I see that that could possibly be an issue for those, those things. Um, and I guess that's it for now. I will come back in if I do.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Well, uh, and I don't fully understand the CERB. Uh, maybe you can help me, through the Chair, maybe you can help me there, just understand, help me understand how that program works. Because my understanding is that if there's work available, um, they're obligated to, to respond, are they not?
I, I think that, uh, all they have to do, um, is, is, is question for sixteen weeks it's available for them, and, and if they're not comfortable returning back to, uh, workplace, um, they don't, they don't have to.
Okay, so, uh, through the Chair, I mean, at least, uh, and, and through the Chair, then this is a question to staff. Is the staff, uh, making any effort to determine, uh, what students, even though they may or may not be receiving this CERB, is the staff making any effort to determine whether or not, uh, we're going to be successful in recruiting pools staff? I, I mean, if not for both pools, at least for one pool? I mean, I, I think there's a combination of things here. Uh, in a, in a good year, we had two pools open and we had pretty good utilization out of both pools. Now, this is not gonna be a good year, but I, I go back to, to Counselor Hunter's concept. Maybe we're just gonna open one of the pools, there's gonna be less parents sending their kids, and there may be less staff available. But at least are we going to try to mount a program? And of course, that's all contingent upon having staff available. So you set sort of contingency plans in place, uh, where the, the staff says to, to the previous workers, or I don't know whether we've already got or taken applications, or whether we've even solicited applications, but at least we could be talking to the kids that have the proper credentials to look to work at those pools, saying to them, if the council makes the decision on this date to open the pool, will you be available? And alternatively, and I don't know how we track this, but we have certain numbers of parents that ascribe to our programs and have the kids come and take lessons from us. Are we doing any kind of marketing effort to determine what number of kids or parents would respond to, uh, lifesaving lessons in camp? I mean, are, are we just waiting for something to happen, or are we being a little bit proactive here?
I'll defer that, that was a question for.
I'll answer that.
Yeah.
So.
Um, through the Chair to, uh, the Mayor. Um, I had reached out to, uh, our previous lifeguards that had worked for us in the past and prior to COVID-nineteen. And, um, I had, um, right now, currently, I would have enough to, to man one pool, for sure.
Okay, but that was prior to COVID-nineteen, and that was March the seventeenth. So here we are, May the nineteenth, two months later, uh, have we, have we refreshed the information?
I have not contacted any of our lifeguards since the COVID-nineteen situation took place. And we have not hired our summer coordinator that potentially would do that sort of work because of the uncertainty of whether or not we would even be opening up our pools.
Just the thing that keeps coming to my mind is, I mean, and I know it doesn't apply to both pools, but my understanding is that the pool in Cardinal is filled from the Cardinal wastewater treatment, or water treatment plant. There, there's a, there's a chlorine component to that water. Does this virus survive in chlorine environment? I doubt it. Most viruses don't. Do, does, does Mr. Shaw have an answer to that question?
Through the Chair, I think in this case, uh, viruses are killed, uh, easily with chlorine in, in most cases, and that's one of the reasons why we chlorinate water. Um, and, uh, we have other treatment like ultraviolet for other pathogens. Um, the thing is with this virus is it's airborne virus. So not necessarily somebody could get it from the water itself, highly unlikely. But the, the fact is that in the pool, I think the social distanc- distancing may be a problem, and, and, and with an airborne component of it.
But, but isn't the counterpoint to that, I mean, it's an airborne virus, but if I get it on me and I'm in a pool, it's gone?
So through, through.
Soon as I get into that chlorine environment.
I, I, I think, I think if you ingest it at any point in time, you, you can swallow as much water as you want. But I think, I think you've got microbes. So, so through, through, through the Chair, uh, I, I believe where we left with respect to the summer programming, the pools and everything else, is that the plan was, at that stage when that report was presented, that we were not going to open up. If, if, if there is a change in direction from council, that they would like us to work on several contingency plans with respect to opening up one pool, two, two pools, subject to us being able to meet the required guidelines, we will be more than happy to invest some time and effort in developing those contingency plans. But as it is, uh, as of now, nothing has changed that would give us any indication that the restrictions are going to reduce to such a stage that we will be in normal or even modified pool operations. Just from, just from the, the cleaning and, and disinfecting and, and all of those items that are gonna be required when you're, when you're dealing with public washrooms and showers and, and all of those areas. So it's not that we're, uh, sitting back and, and waiting, it's, it's the, we're, we're monitoring the reality of the situation. And right now, there does not appear to be, uh, that there's going to be a, a massive, uh, switch of the pendulum to another direction to open up, uh, lar- large gatherings. But if the pendulum does swing, we'll say in the next ten days, you still can be ready in three weeks. Uh, to, to open the pools? Uh, as of right now, we, we see no reason why we wouldn't be.
Chair, just to make a comment, if you don't mind. Um, when you listen to all the news programs and all the people they talk to, everybody is working from home. The kids are driving them nuts, and one of the first things they're gonna do is, once they're allowed to leave their little bubble, they're gonna wanna go to someplace where they can sit and play, have picnics, whatever. And they may hit the green area, because that's what's gonna happen, everyone wants green space. So that's just a comment, just listening to everybody, that's what's gonna happen.
Whether it's going to a pool or go to hockey.
Just basically, they wanna get up and go someplace.
Okay, we've, uh, we've.
Well, before we go on, Mr. Chairman, I think you knew what the CAO has just said, that the staff is basically resting on the, on the Treasurer's report. Uh, and, and, you know, from my point of view, I would at least. Uh, and, and, you know, from my point of view, I would at least like this committee to suggest that it may be time to be at least trying to put a contingency plan together. I mean, whether we execute on it or not is a different thing. But I, I would like to know that, that if we make the decision that, that, that we want it to open. I, I don't want to come back here in another two weeks and be told, well, it's too late to make the decision. We can't do this, we can't do that. I would prefer the contingency to be put in place now. Uh, or at least a background for a contingency to be put in place. So I, I'm hoping, I mean, if it doesn't come from this committee, I don't know where it's going to come from. There's an extra week. If it doesn't come from this committee, I, I would hope it'll come at the council meeting.
I believe we'll, there will be several questions regarding the treasurer's report at the council meeting.
So, so I can, I think I a hundred percent can get on board with, with the contingency, but I, I still think that you're going to end up with, with a staffing issue. So.
But we don't know that.
Well, I mean, you would, you would have to go ahead and advertise now for staff to know in two weeks.
On a contingency basis.
On a contingency basis. So, I mean, I think your first step would be if you can't get staff, you can't, regardless of how much they plan. I mean, if you don't have qualified lifeguards to staff pools, you can't open.
I know, but shouldn't we at least be testing that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, I mean, if we're going to do that, you gotta kind of do that now to see if you can actually get staff to respond. If staff don't respond to put out for, for it, he can, the, the facilities manager can make a, a plan to open the pools all we want. We can say we want to open the pools, but if we actually don't have the lifeguards to man them, it doesn't matter.
That's my point completely. I think this committee should provide some, some instruction here. I know committees don't make decisions, but I think this committee should at least be recommending to council that, that staff be getting, beginning to lay contingency plans. For all I know, by May, by next week at this time, which is the council meeting, we may be a completely different environment. I mean, things are going to open quickly here, I think. I could be wrong, but I think so. I mean, you're in a better position. You, tell us what, what you've learned from your position, how, how you see things happening here.
The advisory council, um, uh, the details of, of those meetings are, are confidential.
I understand.
But generally speaking, you're, you're in, you're in phase one. And this week, starting today, you know, uh, things are rolling out. And depending upon how the next two weeks go, phase, phase two may or may not start. Um, you know, if we see a spike in numbers, uh, phase two will be delayed. If, if we don't, then, then you'll see phase two open. Um, within a month of, of today, you could see the beginning of phase three. Um, i- if everything goes, you know, like absolutely perfectly well. So, uh, where things fit in on phase two and phase three, I, I'm sitting on the advisory council and I don't even know where things fit in on, on that, on that council. So, um, those decisions are being, you know, made, uh, weekly and they're usually coming out on the Thursday before things open. So, you know, the, the timeframe will be what the timeframe is, but it's going to be directly in relation to, to how the numbers look. You know, if the numbers don't get down into the 200s per day, it's not going to happen.
I, I do agree. I think, uh, I think we should, uh, do the chair, uh, get ready. I mean, I think, didn't you say, uh, Mr. Spencer, we had enough lifeguards?
For one pool?
For one pool? But that was before, what was your program again? That was before CBOD and it was before this program that you talked about where the kids are getting, what are they getting?
Well, C, CRB, but they're getting, they're getting either 1250 or up to 1750 a month for, for, for that, for 16 weeks.
Yeah, so, so the information from Mr. Spencer is before that?
Before that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, uh, I might add, and I think it's important that, uh, one thing that I can say that, because it wasn't part of the questioning, it was something that I added in, in the reopening procedure and, and it goes against what the province is suggesting. Um, you know, the new numbers are mostly out of Toronto. Um, there, there should be, and we should as council, I really strongly believe this, is, is we should endorse a regional, um, a regional reopening, uh, guideline. So that if, if our area is, is ready to reopen and we don't have the numbers, that, that we should, uh, make the argument that if Toronto's not ready, well, then Toronto's not ready. But we shouldn't be punished because Toronto's not ready to reopen. And that, that is one of the arguments that I made for small business at, at that advisory council. Uh, and I really think it's important that those considerations, uh, be taken by the province. I mean, there's, there's hardly any cases in eastern and, and northern Ontario whatsoever, but yet all of the, all the businesses, all municipalities are suffering, uh, large revenue losses, uh, due to that. So if council could endorse something like that, I think it'd be good.
Correct.
So. I think we should pick up on that concept.
So what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing, uh, around the table is, is I think we should have a, uh, contingency plan ready to go.
And endorse a regional concept.
Well, that's a council decision, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so Mr. Chair, I don't have the, the, the time here. It's hard, it's hard to write motions while you're sitting at the table. So I'm going to depend on the, on the clerk to catch up on what I'm going to say. But I would like, I'm going to put a motion on the floor. I'm looking for a second or, that, that this committee recommends the council, number one, that, that, that staff begin to put into place contingency plans for the opening of, of, of a pool. Determine whether or not sufficient, sufficient qualified individuals are available to do that. And number two, a second recommendation, that council, uh, uh, endorse the concept of, of a regional, uh, return to normal, to normality, if I can put it that way, or a regional reopening. I know that the province has resisted that up to this point in time. But places like Kingston are on the news this morning, heavily talking about the fact that they're ready to start something and.
Got cases?
But zero cases, zero cases. So I'll put that motion on the floor, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, Deputy Mayor Bill, uh, Pejam.
That's a new one for me.
No, no, I did correct myself. Okay, uh, I think, uh, there was, there's no recommendation with, uh, with that. So I think I'm going to move on.
I think go to move her in a second or.
Go to move her in a second.
Oh, I'm talking, sorry, for the, for the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I'll call the question. All in favor? Looks like it's carried. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, seven D or seven C rather, which is the first quarter facility staff report update. And, uh, Mr. Spencer, I believe, uh, do you have some highlights you'd like to make?
Um, well, just indicating that, um, obviously, the, the March numbers are a bit skewed because of when the arenas closed because of the COVID-19 situation. So, um, that's why there's no comparison for the three month, um, the overall three months. Because March, for example, for the two arenas on average would be at 450 hours and we only had 210 rented this year because of having to close at that time. So, um, January and February numbers, uh, were, uh, were good for, for both arenas. And as you can see, the various, uh, meeting rooms and halls, numbers were, um, on average, pretty much the same. Um, the South Centre did have a little bit of an increase in, in their percentage because of a couple of activities that went on in, uh, January and February at the hall. So I'll take any questions if there is any.
The, uh, I, I just have, uh, one which I'll, which I'll get to right now. Uh, and that was the, uh, the, the South Edwardsville. Why the, why the, uh, why the jump, uh, that you had just mentioned?
There was hall rentals there in January, February that, uh.
And are they out of the ordinary?
No, that they were, there was something new. Um, it was the, um, the group that was, um, from the brewery, um, where.
Okay.
Trivium.
Yeah.
Trying them. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Bush. Any questions on the report? Mr. Packwood, councillor Hunter?
Not really, just to comment, you know, just on the percentages, they, you know, the, um, still reflecting, you know, an, an increase of, you know, four, four or five percent basically in, in bookings. But, but basically again, as we've, you know, reiterated many times, um, meeting the, meeting the need.
That's correct.
Right? Having some prime time hours left open.
That is right.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess, so I'm looking at the ICE rental report and chilling, uh, just, just to get my head around it. So January 2020, where the available hours were, were 450. Is that based on 31 days in January?
That is correct, yes.
And then February shows available hours 435 and that's based on 29 days. And then March shows 210 and that's based on 12 days. Uh, 12 days of one and I think both of them are March 12.
Yeah, 12 and, uh, 14 on the other one.
Yeah. So in all of those cases, even the, the bad situation in March, our prime time is up comparatively. And, uh, you know, so I'm starting to feel that, you know, we're getting up to good utilizations. Too bad to see it all, uh, all lost. But, uh, anyway, I, I think it's, it speaks well that we've been able to increase the percentages of the prime times for January and February. That speaks well.
Councillor Yvonne.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, with that, I'm going to move on to the seven D. And that is the first quarter operations report. And I believe, Mr. Shaw, do you have something to highlight here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so basically Public Works in the first quarter was busy with, uh, a lot of road work. Um, the year was typically hard on hard surface roads due to the freeze thaw cycles. Um, they've done some gravel road grading just to get them, some of the paddles out and get them in shape. They've had 21 winter events, approximately 212 loads of snow hauled from built up areas. Um, they've been working on, uh, garbage on the roadside pickup and roadside brush and tree removal. The waste disposal site in the first quarter showed 124 vehicles attended over 13 Saturdays. Um, looks like the, uh, sales, punch card sales were up over the first quarter last year. I don't have the exact number, but I believe they're up. And, uh, right now the transfer station's working relatively well with, uh, minimum problems. For the water treatment plant, um, just seems to be status quo, I guess. Um, good results on, on all the bacteriological chemical testing. And the wastewater treatment plant has been running very well. They had one process upset with a PLC crash, which the staff had to get, uh, ICS in to help out and get the plant up and running again and, uh, in relatively short order. Any questions?
Okay, I'll start with Councillor Yvonne.
Uh, just, uh, one, uh, due to chair is, um, yeah, your waste, uh, our waste disposal must be way up from, uh, 219. I see you don't have a record, but I haven't been to that transfer site 10 years and the last, last month I've been there four times. So, and I never happened, have a Cardinal there, so I'm sure that's way up. And it is, uh, you have it well organized, I have to admit.
It's going very well.
Well done and, um, the only concern I do have is, um, are we, do we have the, are your, like in Cardinal cleaned up now from, uh, from the leaves and that?
The brush? Yes, they, actually when they did the, lifted the burn ban.
Yeah.
They managed to get quite a bit of that burnt up.
Good, because I didn't want to transfer it from there and then pick it up.
Yeah.
Take it out.
No, they're, they're getting.
That was my big, biggest concern. No, and, and you said it's, uh, well organized up there, so thank you. So, so on the section two, the waste disposal, the spring leaf and brush pickup is planned for me, but I can't remember the dates.
I haven't, the, the first one, I think.
The, the first, the first was May 5th, the Cardinal, May 7th, and the other three, New Exford, John Stanley, Spencerville. And then the second, uh, round is today in the village of Cardinal and Thursday in, uh, New Exford, John Stanley, Spencerville.
Okay, uh, so that's ongoing then. And just a quick question. Uh, the, uh, little, um, gas, used to be a gas station, uh, motor vehicle repair shop at the end of the bridge, where the bridge used to end. There was a, a box there for, um, one of these recyclers. But beside that box, there was a great huge pile of refuse. Did we clean that up or did the person that owns the box clean that up? Or the entity that owns the box clean it up? Do, do anybody know what I'm talking about?
The one at Predator?
Yes.
On Bridge Street, your Cardinal mode? And also the one at, um, uh, GT Automotive? That was, that was pretty much jam packed in there for a while. Uh, I believe they've both been cleaned up, but I, by who, I'm not sure.
And through, through, through the chair, uh, I, I'd, I'd like to say that, uh, our bylaw enforcement officer arranged the one at Predator. But I, I, I do believe that the other ones actually were cleaned up and I'm not sure by, I'm not sure by whom. Uh, but.
So I just wanted to make note of the fact that, that, that the one at Predator was really getting to be quite an eyesore. If it was the bylaw enforcement officer, thank you very much. What worries me about those tight bins is, uh, they're very seldom properly maintained by the entities that, uh, put them up. And, uh, I really think they should be discouraged because we know that they're, they hold themselves out as being altruistic, but they, actually the materials that come into those bins are really, they just sort through it and then sell what's good and throw away what's bad. I suppose it ends up in the waste, uh, waste disposal site at Ottawa rather than here. That's a good thing, but in any case. Um, now, Mr. Chairman, going a little bit further, the, um, uh, Mr. Shaw just noted a problem at the, was it at the wastewater?
Wastewater treatment plant.
And, and, uh, uh, there was a problem with the programmable logical computer?
Yes, correct.
Controller. So that's not highlighted any place in the report, report. Can you say a little bit more about it just for the minutes?
Yeah, it, it was basically, um, um, I think it was last week, week before. Um, that basically the logic, uh, took, uh, lost its memory.
Yes.
So, so the system went into, uh, sort of a static hold. And basically it stopped the actual operation of the SBR. So in that case, it's like a type three control system. So it's, uh, settling in, in, uh, flow and then disinfection. Whereas the other one has the aeration portion of it and is sequential. So, so one batch works at one time while the other one's filling and so forth. And then it switches back and it decans. So at that point, it lost that control. And that's basically the, uh, capital project we have underway this year for the wastewater treatment plant is to replace the PLC with a DCS system. So it's going to hook it into the same system that our water plant runs on, which is a much higher, uh, grade system. And it should alleviate any of those problems. We occasionally come across that during high flows, but this is the first time when we didn't have high flows and it, that it happened. So it has, it's not the first time it's happened.
So through the chair, what was the period of time that it was down and how quickly was?
I would say probably three hours perhaps.
Oh, okay, so hours, not dates?
No, 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 no. It, uh, they reacted quickly and then basically had to work, work on the PLC program, got it up and running and off it went again.
Oh, okay, so just.
We did, and the first one, when it crashed on us some years ago, um, ended up having to report. And basically that one was a, a serious, they had to reload the logic into the PLC and, uh, and took a couple of cracks at it and it was 24 hours probably when that went.
Okay, so, so for the sake of the minutes, this is like a three hour.
Yeah, it's short, very short duration.
Just wanted to back clarify.
Okay, Deputy Mayor? Councillor Hunter?
I just have one question on, uh, on our flow for the central lagoon. There's three March, March, we almost three, three times the flow that we had in January. Is that water from subsea pumps being pumped? three times the flow that we had in January, is that water from subsea pumps being pumped into the system? Or how did we increase so much?
Yeah, it could be bad infiltration and also just straight runoff into the lagoon with the snowbanks and so forth and the fast melt sometimes.
Right.
And, and through the system.
Well, well, listen now.
Okay, go, go ahead.
I don't want to infringe on Counselor Hunter.
Go ahead.
Well, but, but that maximum daily flow that we see in March, you know, five forty-five, is that where you're looking, Counselor Hunter?
I'm looking on page, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Yeah. So I see that flow of five forty-five, that's through a meter.
Yes.
So does that pretty well, I mean, it can't be directly into the lagoon, and that has to be through a meter someplace. So that's got to indicate infiltration in the system someplace.
Correct.
Pretty high, um, and I, I realize it's related to spring thaw.
Yeah.
But we, we have any kind of a, um, a handle on where that infiltration is getting into the system?
We can, we can inspect through the manholes and check the manholes, and we have corrected, uh, some problems with the, the chinking in between the, they're basically large rings to form the manholes.
Yes.
And you'll get leakage in them. Um, on Cherry Street, a couple of years back there, we had, uh, fairly bad infiltration in that one and corrected it, um, ourselves. Um, but what's actually happening, if there's leakage in the pipes and the pipe joints, a bad gas kit, um, things like that, we can't detect that basically because, I mean, it's all in the ground, so.
Yes.
Just what we can see visually through the manholes when we're checking manholes, uh, there's only three in Spencerville, so.
Yeah, I guess the, the thing about this particular system is we're not treating this, but it does end up in our ponds.
Correct.
And later on in our meeting, we'll see where our ponds overfilled because of heavy precipitation in twenty seventeen, I think. But, uh, I, I, I guess, I, I, the gist of my question is, should we be concerned about this infiltration? Or is it, um, or can we live with it?
I think it, it happens in all systems, and I think it's just to the, to what degree. It's something that we, uh, we look at, and that's one of the lining process, like for Cardinal, for example, a lot of linings been going on there, but it's an older system compared to, uh, to Spencerville, which is relatively new sewer system. And we've noticed, uh, large reduction in Cardinal from, from sewer relining. Uh, but there's all different types of material that make up the pipes in Cardinal. It's not just PVC pipe, there's, you know, asbestos cement, there's old clay pipe in Cardinal, and stuff like that, which makes it, you know, uh, more prone to cracking and, and different types of infiltration. So that's why we kind of focus there. Uh, Spencerville's relatively young, as I mentioned, and I don't see where that necessarily benefit.
Okay, okay, good. Um, Mr. Packwood? Mr. Bush, nothing? Okay, and I, I have nothing, so we're going to move on to seven E. There's no recommendation with this, nor is there a recommendation with seven E, which is the Trans Northern Pipeline Maintenance Notice. And I believe this is just, uh, some repairs going to be done, uh, in the, in the near future. And we have in front of you the integrity dig program as well as the locations. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Shaw, you, can you highlight something here for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, uh, staff have been notified by, uh, Northern, or Trans Northern Pipeline, uh, that they intend to do maintenance digs. Um, a while back there, the, the mayor and, uh, Counselor Cameron and Fire Chief myself had attended one of those, uh, maintenance sites. And basically, they dig up the pipeline, x-ray, check for hairline fractures and so forth, and do minor repairs. So they've basically, um, approached landowners whose, whose land they may, in, in John to, to get towards or get to the, the site, and basically let them know that they're going to be doing this work. They've, uh, supplied us with a brochure and a letter, um, kind of outlining their work. And we'd like, uh, with, uh, Council's permission to post on the website.
Okay, and I, and I must say, if anyone hasn't seen one of these integrity digs going on, I heart, heartily urge you to do, uh, do so because they're quite, quite exciting. I also see that they have given us a safety report here as well, so that's, uh, that's one. Okay, do we have any questions or concerns? And I'll start with Mr. Bush, Mr. Packwood, Counselor Hunter, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Counselor. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on then, thank you. And we're going to move on to seven F, which is the Spencerville Lagoon twenty nineteen MECP inspection report. And Mr. Shaw, would you like to, uh, highlight this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's quite extensive, it goes from page thirty-three to page eighty-three.
That's basically this, uh, information item involves the Spencerville Lagoon's nineteen, or twenty nineteen MECP inspection report. Uh, purpose of this is to receive and review Spencerville Lagoon Sewer Works twenty nineteen MECP inspection report. Background, on November fifth, twenty nineteen, an inspection of Spencerville Lagoon Sewer Works was undertaken by the MECP. Uh, the attached report outlines their findings. Basically, uh, there was one non-conformance. Uh, the item relates to the description of the lagoon building's, its various components, uh, missing and a discrepancy in the address on the ECA that was issued January tenth, nineteen eighty-nine, and amended in March twelfth, two thousand and eight. The action required is, from the report, is that during the next planned scheduled alteration, upgrade, or expansion of Spencerville Lagoon Sewer Works, the owner is required to include corrections for discrepancies in the description of the sewer works identified in any application to amend the ECA or when applying for a new ECA. So anytime that there's any type of work, a new main goes in, um, any type of, uh, large refitting of equipment, um, that will basically require the ECA to be reopened. And at that point, um, it's, it's kind of a clean slate, and, and the whole ECA is, is basically reviewed by the ministry, and changes can be made on both sides. So what they're recommending is, the next time we have a major change, that we, we fix up those points on the, in the existing ECA.
They're just minor points?
They are, one of them was a discrepancy on, uh, called at County Road twenty-two rather than County Road twenty-one. Um, the other one was that, uh, it was, it was listed as lot and concession rather than the civic number. And so this, the original ECA was pre-amalgamation, so I'm assuming that, that the lot and concession number is correct for the lagoon. What they wanted, just brought up to the civic number that's there now.
Did you have civic number back then?
No, no, no.
Yeah, but.
There is a civic number there.
Right now, but there wasn't one there.
Yeah, right, correct. Okay, any questions or concerns? And I'll start with Counselor Edelma.
Nope.
All right, okay, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I do. Uh, so the first thing I wanted to mention is that this report is extremely comprehensive and, uh, and the, and the staff had everything that they could possibly have met, except that there's a building that is located in the wrong place, or at least equipment that's inside a building that's listed in the wrong place. And, um, and I, I see the discrepancy with County Road twenty-two and County Road twenty-one, and I understand that they're telling us that we don't need to make these changes until the next time there's a change to the system. My question is, is it necessary to wait for the next, uh, change to the system to get this, uh, corrected? And the reason I'm asking that is because, I mean, it's a fairly significant thing. The building, uh, with the equipment in it is said to be located at Pump Station One, where actually it's at the lagoons. And, uh, that's a fairly major thing, so can we not correct that sooner rather than wait?
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, um, opening up an ECA is, is a fairly extensive process, and it involves, and it, and you might end up with a lot more than just changing the, the address. Um, this was done thirty years ago, and things have changed in the thirty years, and, and so we could be looking at possibility of a capital project if the ministry requires us to do so. Um, there's a lot, there's a lot of little components to it. Um, and for, for something that where you're changing a county road from twenty-two to twenty-one, and, and jumping into it at mid-year, you'd be better to at least wait until, um, next year and, and try and consider all, all the components that are the, um, extra, uh, things that could be done. If you open an ECA, it doesn't mean that your originally, your originally ECA could be taken right up, and you could be starting at scratch, and they could make conditions, uh, as many as they see fit, to, uh, to, and to change your, your operations and a whole lot of things. And they come out with a compliance report once per year. Um, that basically, this is something they report to the government, um, to tell you how, how systems are doing and so forth as a whole in Ontario. And there's listings on there, then, there's some things we have already captured, but, um, there's kind of a list that they say, um, for example, we don't have a maintenance or operations report or a, a manual, which we do. It's something we, we've done that's outside of the ECA, um, looking forward, um, to what, what might be coming. Right now, the government is focusing on sewage works, um, they seem to be anyways, um, can't say exactly what they're doing, but, um, they, I think, I believe they have, uh, the water in really good order. And now they're changing, through organizations in their top people in the ministry, um, there, there's going to be focusing more on sewage. And, uh, there's going to be a lot, I think we'll see a lot in the future, more development towards, uh, saying, you know, we have the, uh, QMS for water, and I suspect strongly coming forward, we're going to have a QMS for sewage and so forth, which is rightfully the way to go. But it's not something you want to necessarily jump into, you know, right off the get-go blindly until you understand what's, what's evolving.
So I think this would fall into the category of let sleeping dogs lie, and you have to wake them up.
Well, I'm going to question that, um, again, because did we not open the, the CFA when we, uh, introduced Shaq Devite in?
Uh, it was amended then, but that was in two thousand and eight.
An amendment to the CFA.
Yeah, and I believe that was due to the, you know, they had noticed some buildup of sludge, and the, there was a study done with the Shaq Devite to show that it reduced the sludge.
Yeah.
And they did that, and that was submitted to the ministry, and they approved it.
As an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, and you see that as a different process? I mean, what concerns me is the, the fact that there's equipment that is said to be in this spot, but it's actually in that spot. It's not, it's not the twenty-one, twenty-two thing that bothers me, that's peanuts. But, but the equipment that's said to be here and it's actually here.
So if, if, if I, if I may, through, through the chair, uh, thi- this has been in existence since nineteen eighty-nine.
Yes.
Uh, it's went through a number of ministry inspection reports.
Unbelievable.
Not, not, not really, because it, it, it truly is minor in nature in, in the respect of it does not have any impact on the operation of the system.
Okay, okay, that's clearly.
So, so, so I think if, if it was something that was impacting the operation of the system, then I would, I, I would agree that we should open up the ECA. Uh, the, the, the concern is, uh, as, uh, as our Director of Operations has indicated, that opening that up, um, what would be a, a three or four-page ECA is probably going to end up being an eighteen to twenty-page ECA with the potential of, um, um, flow meter monitoring during discharge versus, uh, the, the particular method that we use right now. So, um, I, I, I think it's better until we wait until we need to, or the, the ministry indicates that the, we must.
Fair enough, Mr. Chair, I'm satisfied.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, I, I think it's been taken here.
Counselor Hunter? Mr. Packwood? Mr. Bush? Okay, uh, there's no recommendation with that, so I'm going to move on to, uh, seven G. And there is a recommendation with this one, which is the Spencerville Lagoon Discharge Report. And the recommendation reads, the committee recommends that council receive the twenty twenty Spencerville Lagoon District Report and direct staff to submit the report to MCP, I'm sorry, MECP prior to June thirtieth, the thirtieth, um, of June, um. Okay.
So moved.
I have a rule, do I have a second, or Counselor Hunter? Thank you, and, uh, any, any questions, concerns? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carry, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess, I just have one, if you don't mind going back to it.
Go ahead.
Uh, the seventy-two percent, uh, we luck, the, um, discharge eighty-three thousand cubic meters, or seventy-two percent of our hundred sixteen, is that, is that natural? Like, do we, every year, is that pretty much a fair number? Or is there any, is there any number that we should be concerned, like?
I think that's a fair number, certainly something that wouldn't, doesn't concern the ministry. That's one of the things the ministry watches. Uh, I think, uh, sorry, through the chair, um, the mayor had alluded to a problem we had in twenty seventeen. We actually had an emergency discharge that year. But we had also had thirty-two percent, or thirty-two, or thirty-three percent higher precipitation. So a lot more rain going into the, and, and we visually saw that we were in trouble. We were getting close to our overflow points and stuff, so we contacted the ministry and, and initiated that, and they.
So when you say, uh, our, our point i- is, what's a point that we, we may go over? Like, you have seventy-two percent here, so we're okay at that?
Yeah, but that's seventy-two percent of the capacity, so seventy-two percent of a hundred sixty-six cubic, a hundred sixty-six thousand cubic meters. So it's a, that's a fair chunk, you know, when you take twenty-five percent of that, that's a fair amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, okay, uh, did I call the question?
Certainly.
So it's Carol.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You did really well.
There. We'll move on now to, uh, seven H, which is the SNC Water Treatment, uh, Flood Mitigation Report. And I, there is no recommendation, uh, with this, it's just a discussion item.
Question, though?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, we haven't, I thought that we had already received our grant money, but it looks like we haven't. We've got twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-four coming to us. Uh, so does this then complete our, um, our reporting to now receive this money? Okay, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, the, the burn has been built, but all of the, um, hoarding that they ask us to put around to, to designate the construction area is still there. At what point can we take that and remove that? Take that down and remove it?
Back to the down, anytime now, it's just, I think it's, should be gone, I believe.
They're still on?
Still up? I thought, yeah, maybe gone already.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah, it, it'll be shortly, if not, if it's not gone already.
Uh, so if I could ask, um, does this money flow, I know it flows from the feds to SNC and from SNC to us. Um, do we know, is SNC holding the money at this point in time? No, so it still has to make the circuit. Can we be notified when this is received, please? That's the first question. And the second question is, did, was this booked as a receivable on the December thirty-first, twenty nineteen statements, or do we know?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, uh, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure. I, I, I'd have to confirm that with.
Would you mind just dropping me a, an email to let me know whether it was regarded as a receivable or not? Or, the reason I'm asking, because if, if it, if it wasn't booked as a receivable, it's fresh money in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty.
Uh, yeah, through, through the chair, I, I want to believe that it was booked as receivable, but I, I just, uh, I'm not one hundred percent sure. So I'll, I'll confirm with the treasurer.
Thanks very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other, any other questions or concerns? Okay, thank you, we'll move on. And the Mexico does have a recommendation, and it's the modernization of mobile device purchase. And I believe this is for tablets and et cetera for senior staff. And, uh, Mr. Shaw, are you going to highlight this for us?
So through, 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 through the chair, I, I have no problem, uh, delegating to, 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 to Mr. Shaw.
Karen, Karen, I'm sorry, Karen.
I do, I do appreciate that.
No need to rephrase that.
No. So this, this is one of the items with respect to, uh, to the, to the IT strategy that we're looking at, um, going a little more away from, uh, paperless, uh, to, to electronic. Also, with, uh, with, with respect to the COVID nineteen, we, we've realized that we're, we're lagging behind a little bit with, with technology in, in the aspect of, of virtual meetings, tho- those potential, that we have the, uh, the electronic devices with the cameras on it, that, uh, we were anticipating. that we have the the electronic devices with the cameras on it, that we were anticipating will will be sort of a a format with a lot of a lot of meetings for the foreseeable future, where where you're avoiding face to face and and moving toward that virtual end of it. With respect to that, we have the the Escribe program, which is an, which is an electronic agenda meeting avenue, so that individuals like myself will move away from the from the paper trail to 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 a more electronic version. We also have some databases such as Citywide that that will be able to be update that database in the field as the as as the work is being done, to to increase some of those efficiencies instead of waiting to return to either to the office or or to that device to upload into that database. So I think it's, I I think it's a good move forward and and a solid use in line with the with the modernization funding.
And just to comment on that, to tell everyone around the council table that yes, I did read the service delivery review. And mentions several in the review. Now, we do have a recommendation, the recommendation reads that committee recommends that council direct staff to proceed with the purchase of mobile devices in the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and zero cents, plus non-rebitable HST, and approve a transfer from the dedicated Modernization Reserve Fund to cover the expense. Questions, concerns, Deputy Mayor?
For the chair, Mr. Seaver. Um, the total was nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two, eleven devices, an average of seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars and five cents a device. Like, what kind of a device? Is it a phone, is it a tablet?
Sure.
Sure.
Um, there's nine iPad Pros and two Microsoft Tablets. The two Microsoft Tablets are for the individuals that have Android phones, so they'll blend with those. All the other senior managers have iPhones, so they'll blend with the iPad Pros.
Go ahead, yes. I have, I just have a follow-up question.
So through through the chair to CAO or Facilities Manager. So new devices, not replacing existing devices?
Through the chair, that is correct, so they are new iPad Pros. They also come with the pencil, the keypad, and a an extended one-year warranty on top of the, with the Apple Care.
And so just, this will be a comment to, just in general, not not to Mike, but I just want to make note of the the seventeen sixty-seven fifty. And and I will compare that back to what, you know, Councilor Hunter just brought in his new one. I'm delaying because I'm not sure exactly what I want to do to pair up with my device and everybody else at the table. Um, but, you know, our budget's a thousand bucks a piece, so just keeping that in mind, this is considerably higher than than what ours was. So I don't have to pair, but.
Councilor Hunter?
Uh, I think Councilor Bill was in first.
I'll go ahead if you want.
Somebody.
Um, I have a a question. Will we be able to use some of this ourselves as council? These programmed?
No, they're not programmed.
They're 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 the devices, they're they're not the programs.
So with the Citywide, we're still not going to be able to get in to look up our complaints? Is that right? Is that part of this?
So through through the chair, this is, this is not part of 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 that. This is a completely separate item.
Good enough, thank you.
Councilor?
I'm all in favor of them getting it done. One question I have is, all our managers are going to have have these, and they're all going to be have cameras on them and stuff, that they can take pictures of the job sites and and stuff they're on, I assume. Are they going to be able, that if they're doing a major job site that they're bringing information to us, are they going to be able to take some pictures of that and send that to council? So we can actually see when they're talking about replacing a major culvert or something, and we can actually see what what's being done, rather than having to get in the truck and drive out all the time to see the work that was done there. The road manager, or if Mike's did a major repair and something on the rink, and he can take a photo of that or a short video of it or something and send to us, if we can actually see it, that we're not going to have to all make a trip there to see it.
So through through the chair, I think eventually, as as the as the bulk are on the mobile devices, that with respect to recording and and some of those additional photos, that's certainly something that would probably be useful in in all accounts.
Mr. Bush, any questions, concerns? Mr. Packwood? Any, any, go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
So there was nine iPad Pros with pencils, keypad, and extended warranty, what were the other two?
Microsoft Tablets.
Microsoft Tablets?
That's correct. And two of the iPods have the cellular capability, so that we have them for our emergency control. That would be as a as a nodded, in case there was no internet.
That's fantastic.
And that, so we have two of those, it'd be mine and the CAO's.
Just a, just a quick question, Bo, is on my mind, on the Microsoft devices, what, are they the Surface Pros?
Yes, they are.
And are they the six or the seven?
I believe they are the seven is the is the price that they have.
Okay, the the reviews and reports have been excellent on that on that device, by the way. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you want to back?
So, if I can, through the chair, so the the motivating factor here was to enable staff to be able to participate at meetings, at Zoom meetings or Skype meetings. I think that was the motivating factor, is that, am I correct in that?
So through through the chair, one of them.
That was one of the motivating factors, okay. Because the other motivating factor, or the other use that we know, that we would be able to get from these reports, came from the Service Delivery Review, where the Service Delivery Review indicated that, for example, uh, a a person in the field would be able to input information from daily activity immediately into into the into the device and and have it go immediately into the Citywide. Is my understanding correct there?
Uh, so through the through the chair, yes, ultimately, as long as there is Wi-Fi. But but the information can be entered in, and then once, once Wi-Fi is available, then you'd be able to, that that information would be uploaded in.
Okay, so through the chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So that leads me to the next question, again, through the chair. So I don't know how to phrase this. Once these devices arrive and they're in the hands of the people for whom they're intended, how long until we take advantage of the secondary function? I.e., not the Skyping and the Zooming, but the use in the field? How long until we can get advantage of that factor?
So through 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 the chair, I I would think that we would probably be about a month, getting some some of the staff familiar with that, with with the mobile device, and how that may look different than than the desktop version.
Carry. Deputy Mayor?
Just one last thing, and you hit on it when you asked about the, how long to get them out into the field. If they are going out into the field, they'll need an OtterBox too, right? Or or at least some kind of a protective case. I mean, if they have the one year, that's great, but if you drop it, you're replacing it. So is the budget number enough to include, you know, the the OtterBox case can be at least a hundred and fifty bucks on a a piece in addition, if if it's not included? That's another little bit of added to that, I just want to make sure that you've got enough to do it.
So through the chair.
Um, through the chair, the OtterBoxes were not included in that. Um, I I know for myself, what I would do is I would take the picture with my phone in the field, and I have this in the field with me in the truck, and they blend together via Bluetooth for connectivity, so then the picture would show up on here as soon as you took them on here. And then you do your report, right there, right there on on site.
Go ahead.
I think the essence of the report, the essence of the question is secu- uh, protection.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what's, I mean, I.
Some of them, like, this is basically what it comes, the way it comes right now. Deputy Mayor?
I've dropped mine too.
Yeah, and I'm on, I I mean, I'm on my.
We can certainly get.
I'm on my third one, that that's all that, and and I. I don't work on, I don't work on, I don't work on Robinson in the field, so.
You say you're dropping? And there is a two-year warranty, I understand.
Not for dropping.
Well, if you have Apple Care, I don't know.
If you have Apple Care, yeah.
But I, what I'm saying is, like, the last thing I'd want to see is somebody coming back and asking for another two thousand dollars, when we could have just approved another hundred and fifty dollars, so that if they did drop it, it was protected. That's, that's my only, my only option. I mean, I think they're a great purchase. Um, you know, it's going to make your jobs so much, like, way more efficient and effective. And and you know, if you can use them in the field, great, I think that's that's phenomenal to do it. I just, I don't want to see somebody coming back or having to put two thousand bucks to replace a screen or, you know, not working.
Do you want to amend the recommendation to include that?
Yeah, I mean, easily, yeah, I would, if it's the will of of others around, sure. I mean, I I think that if we're going to make a purchase of this size, another hundred and fifty dollars to make sure that we protect those with something like an OtterBox seems highly reasonable.
I I I tend to agree with you, Deputy Mayor, and so I will, I will just pull the table here quickly. Councilor Bill, yes, I know to the addition.
I'm good, Chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, definitely.
Myself, yes, Deputy Mayor, yes, I believe. Counselors?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
So when the motion comes before council, it'll be slightly revised?
Okay, we don't have to do that here.
I just, just a side point. No, I just, I just wish I had chairs and OtterBox, they're the best thing made.
Okay, um, did I get a mover and seconder for this recommendation? I'm sorry, I I did forget.
You don't think it?
No, we do not.
No, could I, could I have a mover, Councilor Hunter and a seconder? Deputy Mayor, thank you, for the the recommendation, which would be changed to include the additional spending for the the production. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry, thank you. And maybe someday council will have one of these. That that leads me to our next topic, which is seven J, which is the Fuel Management Card Lock System. And I see Gord is raising his hand to highlight this. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an action item. Back in February eighteenth and March sixteenth, committee meetings, staff recommended the council purchase two Cube Card Lock Systems outright, utilizing funds from the Townships Modernization Fund. They directed staff to get more information and solicit neighboring municipalities, see if they utilize CarLock and the brand they used, if they might share any benefits shortcomings from their experiences, or if they have any interest in a joint project. So basically, staff reached out to the municipalities and the counties of Leeds and Grenville. Uh, some interest was offered from Augusta, South Dundas, Prescott, and the counties. Staff were asked to share the research for the project with Augusta, South Dundas, the counties, and subsequent correspondence with the interested parties indicated that the project would not likely proceed until twenty twenty. It would be revisited next year. Uh, staff reached out to four potential suppliers, Ultramar, Triangle Pump, Stinson, and Kewen. And after several attempts, utilizing both email and phone, only Ultramar and Triangle Pump responded with product descriptions and quotes. Uh, the Cube MC Box one point five is listed at about eleven, or sorry, twelve thousand dollars installed. And probably about double that for the Triangle Pump. Staff believe that the Cube is is a unit to purchase because of the cost and because of the the features it has are adequate for for what we need. So the recommendation that committee recommends that council purchase two Cube MC Box one point five units at a cost of twelve thousand dollars plus HST, to cover the cost from Modernization Reserve Fund.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Uh, before we go to questions, I'm going to ask for a mover and a seconder, and then we'll go to concerns and questions. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Deschamp and a seconder? Mr. Bush, thank you, we have a mover and a seconder. Uh, comments and questions? And I'll start with Mr. Bill, or Councilor Bill.
At these, for twelve thousand bucks, if, can you override these if something happens, key lock, so we can keep using our our pump?
Yeah, please, so there's a, there's a manager FOB for them. And the manager FOB is used for downloading the data and and to override that type of thing.
Now, if we purchase these twelve thousand, that's going to put everything under one roof? Like our fuel, our diesel, clear diesel, color, gas?
The the units themselves are are basically acquired the data from a pulser. So the pulsers go on the hoses, you can have up to, I think it was, it was twelve or twenty-five different units with different pulsers. So the pulser reads the the flow going through it, and it's a four to twenty, we're based on a four to twenty. So the the higher the amperage that shows it is indicated by higher flow, so then it sends a signal to the to the the box itself.
Yeah.
And collects the data. So there's numerous that could come off, one per site, one box per site.
So.
Different pulsars for per different.
Okay, so that means, and we won't, we won't need Circle C and we won't need Drummonds anymore? If we go this route, is that right?
So through through the chair, this is, this is for diesel?
Diesel, yeah.
Clear and color only?
Correct, correct.
And that's all it's going to do? So we're going to be in the same, we're going to be in the same boat then, what we are now? For a fuel management, we still have gas here, we've got gas there.
So so through through the chair, we will be in a much better position to 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 monitor the 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 diesel usage on there, and I think the tracking with respect to the um, the use of Drummonds and 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 Circle K is is reasonably tracked now.
You have a follow-up question?
Uh, yeah, duly, Chair. I've, if if we're going to do anything like this, and 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 twelve grand, I'd rather get it right first, and I don't think this is getting it right. If if anything, I'd rather have key locks, if you're going to do anything, have key locks at your ESOL stations on Cardinal and Johnstown, where all vehicles can, we can do gas, diesel, color, clear, whatever. And it's all under one roof, can get rid of our diesel that's down in the in the in the two buildings. We're completely, and and do the lock guard system through a situation like that. That's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor?
I was having a tough, a tough time understanding this, because, first of all, I I don't understand what reporting we're going to get out of it. And I guess what I want to know is that every single liter that we purchase, I want to know what vehicle it's going into at what mileage. And I, and so I don't know enough about this system to tell me that. But what I do know is that I'm paying twelve thousand dollars here, where I don't know why it's necessary. Because I can, if I was a fleet, running any kind of a fleet, I can go to ESOL, they're the big ones, Petro-Canada, and a number of others, and I can get a key lock system that doesn't cost me a penny. They're glad to give it to me, because they know they've got me tied up as a customer. But they're glad to give it to me, and it's a key lock system that it either, it either ties to the, most of the time, it ties to the vehicle. So that when that key lock is used at that station for that vehicle, I know how many liters are going into that vehicle at what mileage. And I've got the whole system and the reporter at no cost. And it's good for gasoline, diesel, and and all my fuels. So I don't understand. So I don't understand what this gives me that is superior to a key lock system that I would get from ESO or Petro Canada. Well, we don't have Petro Canada, but ESO, we could get it from Circle K. We could probably even get a similar system from Drummond's, I'm sure. But I, I just, I don't know enough about what this is gonna do for me. One thing I do know, though, and I'm just gonna make comment about it, we did ask the staff to go and check with these other potential suppliers. And I know that they made it, and I can see from the report that they made a good effort to do that. I'm just disappointed that none of the people that we, that we ta, uh, excuse me, uh, not potential suppliers. We asked the staff to reach out to other municipalities. And we reached out to United Counties, Augusta, South Dundas, and Prescott, and none of them wanna be partners with us. And I don't understand that. So the six, I, I'd like to have Mr. Shaw speak to that just, just for a minute, although it's beside my main point.
Mr. Shaw, would you like?
Through the chair, if I may. Um, I don't know that any of them don't want to be a partner with us. I think the timing isn't really good for them. Um, it's, uh, an investment of twelve thousand dollars that that's not budgeted, uh, for them. Um, we have our, our funds still. I'm, I'm not sure that a lot of those townships still have any of that funding money left. Uh, no, South Dundas, for example, sunk a lot of money into a compactor for their dump and, and different people have, have spent their funding in, on, on that route. And there was some, some interest. Um, Augusta, for example, they have a FOB system in, but theirs is an on-off lock thing. So they go to the pump, their FOB basically unlocks the pump and they can pump their, their fuel. Um, Kempville, or, sorry, North Grenville, um, they have a card lock system for their, I think for, just for their gas, two, two gas trucks, but it's through McEwen, the gas station. So they go, their card lock through that. All their, uh, diesel fuel is not through card lock. Um, all of them had expressed interest in it. Um, one allowed that they'd, uh, attended an AMO, uh, the net conference, uh, which basically promoted card lock systems, uh, thought they were a good idea. Um, uh, yeah, and, and one was very enthusiastic about it, but I think the funding and with COVID and stuff, uh, I think that kinda put it on a back burner until they can get to the beginning of next year and then, and, and budget for it. So I, I don't think that it was a lack of interest as much as the timing were, were, you know, two, three months into the year after budgeting is, you know, all packed in, so.
So, so I have a follow-up. Uh, so just tell me a little bit about the system that United Counties uses because I can recall la- last year's meeting with the auditor of the United Counties, and the auditor was able to point out to us that there was something like two hundred and ten liters missing between the system, what the system said we used and, and what we actually used. And, and, uh, and the, and the auditor warned us, I remember this very distinctly, that the auditor said it's only two hundred and ten liters, but when you're missing two hundred and ten liters, it's a symptom that you're not, um, you're not monitoring your, your system properly. So what kind of a system does the United Counties use? And by the way, they buy their fuel on the spot market, and they reconcile, every single day, they reconcile what they bought on the spot market and the spot market price for today with what they got charged on the, on the system, however the system worked. So can you just tell me a little bit about what kind of a system they use?
Through the chair, um, I can't comment a lot on their system because I, I really don't know much, and I was talking about the systems that I was aware of. Although what they did allow was that they are just the two, I think, two gasoline vehicles that they have. Uh, I'm not sure which ones, but they were, uh, county's vehicles, use the card lock system at the McEwen gas station. So there's already a card lock system there for, for that. Um, their diesel fuel, they do not have a card lock system, and they were interested in knowing, and I, and I actually passed on the information I had on the two card lock systems uh, to them for their review and consideration next year when they're looking at it. So they don't have it for their diesel fuel fleet. That's all their plows and, and, and street sweepers and whatever they have.
Who are you talking to?
I was talking to Bill Guy.
Deputy Mayor, do you have, uh?
No.
That's.
Well, I don't have any problem with doing this for, for our diesel. I can't see using a card lock system for our diesel trucks that we're gonna be running to middle of the night when they're plowing, they're low on fuel, and they come back for sand, but they gotta fill the sand and then head to a gas station to get fuel to finish it. I think we gotta have our diesel tanks at our, at our workstation where they're filling, that they can fuel diesel when they come back for sand and stuff, not have to run to a gas station to get fuel.
Go right by the door, though.
Hey?
Go right by the door, though, of those stations. Husky or S or whatever, the Nine Mile or Johnstown, I mean.
Still gotta make another stop.
We have diesel under, under a system currently, do we not?
We purchased vol- diesel currently from Ultramar.
But, and we have a, we have a method of controlling what comes out of that tank.
Currently with the tanks that are in there, they're not metered.
They're not metered?
No. They're, they're scheduled by, the, the owner of the tanks is Ultramar. They own the tanks.
Right.
Um, they're, this summer, they were scheduled to replace the tanks and pumps.
A good time to go with this.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Um, just, just, I'm going to go to Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush. Any questions or concerns? Is there? Yes.
Is there a problem with, uh, vehicles, the gas vehicles following up at the gas station? Or there, there's reports, repairs, or, uh, um, there's written proof that they've done it. There's an invoice. So the vehicle, gasoline can be tracked, no problem? But we haven't got anything to track, diesel trucks. So.
Well, even.
Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, even the gasoline, I mean, unless you're using a card lock system, uh, I can pull up to, to the Drummond pump with a, with my own vehicle or with the township vehicle and fill the vehicle. I mean, theoretically, in a place like Cardinal, if I recall correctly, we get a slip that comes back to us with the vehicle number on it. And I think that's how we track. But again, that's, it's a, it's ninety-nine point nine percent dependent on, on, uh, employee honesty. Not that we have that worry, but it's not auditable, if I can put it that way.
Chair, something else to the council?
Well, I think our, our gas is just, just a matter of, as the mayor said, we get a slip with the vehicle number that they put in on. I don't know, uh, diesel, there's no trouble getting card lock system, I grant that, but it comes for sale, or it comes for, though, as I said, we can go to gas station and have a card lock for diesel, but I don't know where to go for a card lock for gas. There are not many stations to have a card box for half-ton vehicles. Stop pulling the, they only, they use, I assume they use a credit card, and that's how they put it on the card for collecting, or do we have a, a bill?
So, so through, through the chair, with, with respect to, to, to Drummond's, there is a, there is a, a credit, uh, card system that they, that they, that they swipe over for the vehicle?
Just a ma- matter of, if we're not record, recording the actual mileage and set up, stuff on it, simple matters. Same, same as the Tackleberry trucks use, they, they fill up the pump and their, and their, when they fill up the pump in the morning, they record the mileage in their, in their record book of what the mileage was in the field, in the amount of fuel. Two minutes more bookkeeping work for the driver, whoever it is that's driving it. We record them all the time for the business. We're, Chad and I do that now. When you go to leave the shop, you record the mileage on your thing and you leave. When you fill it, you record the mileage, how much you put in it when you filled it, so.
But I don't think.
That doesn't cost a lot.
Gasoline, I don't think we do that in that, to that degree. We just, when you, when the needle hits whatever empty, we fill it. I believe that's, that's how that works.
So, so through, through the chair, a- a- as of right now, there, there's not, uh, the, the same consistency with respect to recording the mileage at, at, at every fuel lot?
Right.
But that, tha- that's just a matter of, uh, uh, of a po- of a, a policy change with respect to the, to, to the gasoline. At the same time, we would be doing, uh, that type of policy change with, with the diesel, with this, uh, with this card lock system where they would enter in the, uh, enter in the mileage when, you know, before they start to pump and.
Now, that's with this system, yeah.
That, that is with this system, with respect to the diesel.
For, for diesel, I'm just putting this out there for diesel.
Yeah.
With a card lock system, other than our own yard?
Mm-hmm.
Does that sa- does that same feature apply?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
Well, okay.
And maybe, uh, maybe somebody else is.
Okay. The que- the question refers to the fact that, um, right now, for diesel, we can go to a card lock system at either Drummond's or ESO in, in the village of Cardinal. Um, when, and I'm not familiar with the card lock system, so that's why I'm, I'm asking the question. When the card lock system is used, is the mileage recorded and so on and, and so forth? What is, is it just, okay, Mr. Shaw, you can help me out there?
Right, Mike, Mr. Chair. Um, basically, we're talking about two different systems here, I think. Um, for, for Cardinal or, or Drummond's to go to a card lock system, it's a whole new machine. You know, they, they have the, a card where they're using a, a, a credit card, that they're swiping and, and doing the gas in Drummond's.
No, we're only talking diesel right now.
Okay, but for, for either or, it doesn't matter. It, one's a card lock system, one is a, is a different system altogether. They're not equipped, I don't believe, in Cardinal or Drummond's to, to do a card lock system. Because the card lock system has a, an I, a FOB for each vehicle, and it identifies that, that's only for that vehicle. It identifies that vehicle. Uh, you need that FOB to activate the system and run out the fuel, and it records what the fuel taken is for that individual FOB. So that would go on the, the keys for the vehicle.
Correct, and that's where the information would be?
Correct. That, yeah, feeds into the machine, it gets downloaded and, and put onto a PDF. So you get a spreadsheet with basically the, the identification of the vehicle. You could punch in, in the card, in the Cube system, you have to punch in the mileage. Uh, it's, it's an, an extra benefit of the system. And, and it identifies each vehicle and each, each liter used, each. It's, but the other system we're, we're talking about, if you were to go to, uh, Drummond's or to Cardinal, their pumps aren't set up for a card lock system.
Okay.
You know, that, that, it's a credit card system there.
Okay, I thought, I thought I heard somewhere around the table that the card lock system is already in place, ready to go.
No. Typically, card lock systems are for big fleets and for tankers. And that's why I go around. I got a couple of references on the card lock system, uh, from Cube and called them. Uh, there's one in VARS, um, I think it's called, uh, I think off the top of my head, I have, sorry, so let me have a quick peek here.
I don't think the name is that important.
No, it's a, basically, it's a, a hydro vac company, and they have twelve, uh, heavy trucks in their fleet. And the guy loved the system. Basically, he said he had no trouble with it. Um, it, it kinda tracks everything, so they're basically about the same size as us. There was another one that was way out in Brampton. But typically, it's not something that a lot of municipalities seem to have, uh, from around here anyways. Um, speaking with people, Brockville has one, but theirs is a, you know, I had mentioned in a previous meeting, a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar system. And, and they can differentiate between their ambulances, their police, and all these other units all working together on a huge one. And it's, uh, automatically downloads to their, uh, asset management, their fleet management. Um, predicts maintenance problems, does all the stuff, right? So that's not something we need. You know, what we need is basically for looking for tracking every liter. We need, that's the system we're looking for.
Yeah, okay, okay, because I'm, I'm just wondering if we're, if we're gonna spend, uh, what is it, twenty-four thousand dollars?
Uh, twelve, twelve.
Is that for two units?
Correct, that's for two, yeah. So unit per site, and the other one is, uh, pretty much double that, but would also take a site.
Are we, are we going to spend twelve thousand dollars to find five hundred dollar errors, whatever? Deputy Mayor, you want to in?
Sure. Um, through the chair, uh, to this, to CAO, I, I feel like we've had this discussion a couple of times before. Where, uh, council gave direction to come back with this report, um, suggesting that, you know, we contact the other municipalities and that, and that, you know, we enter into or we find a, a card block or, or a, a management system. My recollection's right, this is exactly what we asked the director to bring us. Um, I'm not sure exactly why we don't like it at this point. Uh, to me, if, if you tell me that it's going to do everything that we tasked you with and that it, it's going to do everything that we wanted it to do, then I think it's great. So, uh, I know set out in the Service Delivery Review, Review, it suggested the fuel management system. Uh, I was, I remember, uh, the meeting where we asked for this report to come forward, and, you know, I think this is, this is exactly it, so.
But I think we asked, I think what we asked for was a fuel management system. And to me, when I, when I talk about a fuel management system, I, I mean everything, fuel, gasoline, diesel, the whole thing combined. Propane, natural gas, if that's, if that's also used in vehicles. Um, that, to me, to me, this is to me, this, this is diesel only, and I hope this is the end of the fuel management system. I'm not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this is, uh, this is, this is the best way at, at, at this time, because we also have to be able to control gasoline as, as, as well. And I'm, and, and I'm in no way suggesting or, or intimating that in any way there's, there's a problem, uh, theft-wise, or whatever you wanna call it. I'm not saying that whatsoever. Uh, I just, I just think that as elected officials, we're called upon to be able to account for almost every penny that this township spends. And if this did gasoline as well as, as diesel, I would, I wouldn't have a, I wouldn't have a, a, much of a, much of a thought. But if it's only, if it's only diesel, and I'm sorry, but I, I was just under the impression that the tanks that we had for diesel were, were moni- were, were monitored and, and can be controlled. That doesn't seem to be the case, but, so anyway, uh, there's more people who wanna talk. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Well, can, uh, Mr. Shaw explain why these, um, units, if they're units, they, why, why don't, is there a reason that they don't accommodate gasoline?
They, uh, they can accommodate gasoline, but we don't have tanks for gasoline.
Okay, so, so what is the way the system works? We, we need our own tanks?
Yes. What it wears is it basically that you have the, the meter or, or the pump, the gas pump on the tank, and there's a pulsar unit, it's called, that fits on the hose, and it measures flow going through the hose. So for each type, uh, color or, or, uh, non-color diesel, you can have separate pulser's. And it relays the message through a wire to the Cube box or, or to whatever you choose, and, and records that information on it for you.
So I mean, so I, I'm heavily influenced by Counselor Hunter's comment that, you know, when the, when the snowplows come in at three in the morning or two in the morning or something, and they, and the guys are, are, um, picking up another load of sand, they're, they're fueling at the same time. And so maybe that's a strong argument for the tanks, the diesel tanks being where they are. So are you telling me that if I had gasoline tanks sitting beside or in the proximity to those diesel tanks, that this system would be able to accommodate both gasoline and diesel? If we had our own gasoline tanks?
I believe it will.
We'd need another pump, would it not?
It, it would def- yeah, with another pump and another tank and a.
Yeah, in other words, the, the diesel tank that's there would need to have its pump.
Yes.
And the gasoline tank that's there would need to have its pump.
Yeah.
And those two would somehow feed to this Cube.
Yes.
And that would, that would put a total management system in place.
That's my understanding. But you'd also, for new gas tanks, I'm not sure what the environmental, uh, regulation is around that, but you would need containment and, and other things besides, uh, having the tanks that added. uh, having the tanks added as well, so.
Right, so the diesel tanks that we have, are they freestanding diesel tanks or are they burned?
They're within an enclosure, cement enclosure.
They're within a cement and they're, they're burned.
Contained, they're in containment.
Yeah.
It's in cement.
Yeah, they're in a containment burn. Gasoline tank, there wouldn't be room for a gasoline tank in that, inside that same.
Oh, no, no.
So. So now you get into the expense of putting in the gasoline tank to make this system work for gasoline. So we're euchred again.
Well, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm under the impression that, uh, that, we'll say, just to use a name, Petro Canada, which is not in our area, but gas companies would be more than eager to play in tanks for us if we bought the product from them.
Through, through the chair, I, I think it'd be unlikely that they'd be wanting to build containment systems and.
No, I think we'd have to do that.
Cor- cor- correct. So, so, so may- ma- maybe, i- if I may, I think we're getting a little bit off topic. That this, the, the, this card lock cube system is not the end all be all fleet management, uh, system.
Correct.
Never, never intended to be. It's a phase and it's a component of a more robust fleet management system, which we will be, uh, taking this data into citywide and, and also with respect to the, uh, to, to the gasoline units. So we, yes, we, we, we do need to improve on, um, recording our mileage when, when, when items are being fueled up. But all the information is there and it's just a matter of incorporating it in from an operational standpoint to, to, um, achieve a, a, a fleet, uh, management system.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Through the chair to, to board. Uh, do all the vehicles, maybe, uh, Mike as well, do all the vehicles have GPS? All, like all of our fleet, gas, everything has, has GPS. So if they would record mileage amount driven, we'd know, we'd know exactly how much they were driven, right? So, so that's pretty simple to reconcile with the mileage that, you know, if somebody has an out of whack, uh, credit card, uh, for a gas purchase, uh, if somebody's actually comparing that back against the amount that the vehicle's traveled, if there's any discrepancies, they, they fairly easily show up if, if people are worried about discrepancies. Um, the, the idea of the system, though, through the chair, um, was, was to make it easier to put into, to citywide and, and to give us, you know, a more, well, I guess really we don't have one, but so, so the beginning of, of, of a robust way of, of reporting back exactly, you know, what we were using. Mike, that was the original intention, correct?
Through the chair, that was my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Well, I think this, I agree with your deputy mayor. This is what we asked for in the first place with the cost of the system to do, to look after. We're worried about our diesel, how much fuel each truck and stuff was using. This system's gonna do it, so I don't see the problem. As far as your gas and stuff, as their deputy mayor says, it's easy to track that. They're paid by credit card to have us, we want it. A book, they can keep a book and write, uh, uh, if they wanna take it off GPS, we can take it off GPS miles.
But our gas system isn't paid by credit card. Our gas system is billed to us and we write a check to the individual company. We, it's, it's not on a credit card.
So, so through, 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 through the chair, uh, uh, Drummond Gas, for instance. So each particular unit, so whether it's a, a, a fire truck or a public works vehicle has a card associated with it. So when that unit goes to fuel up, so for instance, a fire unit goes to fuel up, uh, and it's van one, then van one is swiped, and everything's recorded. We get a slip of paper. Yes, at the end of the month, Drummond's Gas, uh, provides us the, the invoice with the details of that, of that printout and, and the invoice is paid.
Okay, so, okay. But, but Cardinal is not that way?
Um, it, it doesn't, it does not have a specific card for each one, but the, the, the unit number is, i- i- is recorded at each, at each fuel up.
Okay, so, am I hearing, am I hearing anything else around the table? Any other questions, concerns? Okay, I have a mover and I have a second to spend $12,000 on these systems. And I feel, I feel, I must say, I feel a little better knowing that this is part of a, of a, of a robust system to, to go forward. Um, do we have, I guess the que- the last question I have is the tanks that we have for diesel now, are they adaptable to this system or do we have to hire the new tanks?
My understanding is that the supplier, the current supplier we have is replacing them this summer. So he's gonna be putting new pumps, new tanks in.
And the system can, can piggyback on that?
Yes, he's offering the, the cube.
Okay, um, did you have a question, Counselor?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm go- I'm going to, uh, I'm going to call the question and, um, as, as the chair, can I ask for a recorded vote?
You can.
So I will ask for a recorded vote then, uh, on the purchase of these, on the recommendation. And I'll start with Counselor Dillawatt.
I'm nay.
Is that a nay?
No.
Yeah. Okay. Mayor Seale?
Oh, I'm, uh, I'm in the middle someplace. I'll vote in favor, really.
Must come with that chair.
Sorry.
And, uh, and, and I'll, and I'll go in favor, Deputy Mayor, Counselor.
Yay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have one nay and six, uh, six eights. So that's Carrie, thank you. Now we'll move on to seven K, which is the surplus, uh, surplus lands on, on South Street. And, uh, I believe you've had, you've had a chance to, uh, read the, uh, briefing note. We know the background on this land. And it is, the recommendation is that committee recommends to council, one, declare the surplus land legally described as Part Block Three WS Spencer Street or WS Spencer Street Plan Forty, Part One, uh, Fifteen R Sixty-eight Ninety-eight on the attached sketch for sale by means of a public tender and direct staff to follow the remaining steps outlined in the sale surplus land policy and return to council with the minimum tender price. Uh, my fir- my first question to staff would be, um, when we receive the tenders and we're not happy with the tenders regardless, do we have, does council have the, uh, final authority to say yea or nay?
So through, 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 through the chair, with, with, with any tender, the council would have the opportunity to not accept the, the bid?
I, I was under that impression, I just wanna clarify, thank you. Okay, um, any questions on the briefing note? Mayor Seale?
Yeah, uh, I got this surplus land policy in front of me. And the very first thing it says on the policy statement, the corporation and township of Veteransburg Cardinal recognizes the following principles for the sale of surplus land, the declaration of land as surplus and for giving notice of any such proposed sale, procedures for the sale of surplus land. The first thing that you have to do is dec- is a declaration of surplus land. Prior to selling any land, council shall, by resolution, declare the property to be surplus to the needs of the township. So I don't think at this point that we've declared this land to be surplus. If you read the recommendation, it says, declare the surplus land legally described as, it gives a description. It's not surplus land until we declare it to be surplus by resolution. So have we declared it at some other meeting to be surplus?
So through, through, through the chair, uh, my apologies, if you change the word, declare the land surplus. We're, we're asking for the land to be declared surplus.
Yes, that's what you're asking for.
That's what we're asking for.
Right, but that's not what the resolution says.
Well, um, so I'm, 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 I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to say that th- those two words are, are reversed. So declare the land surplus legally described as.
Well, the, the verb, the verb should be someplace else. De- declare the land legally described as dot or dot, as surplus, right? It's just a, it's a, it's a phraseology here.
Correct, and, and, and through the chair, my, my apologies for.
Okay, all right, so that, now that I understand what we're being asked to do here. So first of all, we're gonna de- we're gonna declare that land as surplus and then we're gonna direct staff to follow the remaining steps.
Correct.
Okay, all right. But that's, so we need a rewording of that recommendation.
Is the court satisfied with the wording, the rewording issue?
Yes, I can reword it in the minutes and in the resolution that comes.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns, comments? Uh, no, just one. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, again, going back to not only the policy, but to the act itself, the, the, the declaration has to be surplus to the needs of the municipality. That's the declaration.
You got words with him?
Well, yes, and.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Dillawatt, did you wanna get in?
Uh, no, I, no, I, I just want my forty-seven thousand and some cents back into forty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-six as quick as possible.
Deputy Mayor? Counselor? John, nothing? Okay, uh, I'm looking for a mover. Uh, Deputy Mayor and second by Counselor Hunter, thank you. Uh, I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie, thank you.
So just for clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, so we've, we've established from the motion, from the, uh, from the, um, recommendation that we're going to dispose of this land, uh, you're right, by tender, and it does say with the minimum tender price. So the minimum tender price is, is the, uh, is not only the money that we've got into it, but it's, uh, I think part of the thing is to gain, uh, the appraisal value back as well. So that'll have to be added. Okay, so I understand where we are here. Through the chair.
Thank you, uh, thanks Carrie. And I'll move on now to seven L, which is the Service Delivery Review. And it goes from page, uh, one hundred and thirty to three hundred and, eight, or whatever it is, um, actually eighteen. So, uh, I know I've read. I have, I have read the report. Um, okay, uh, I'm going to, I'm, actually, I'm gonna get the mover and second on this first. Uh, so do I have a mover to accept this, the, the recommendation? And the recommendation reads, the committee recommends that council receive the final copy of the Service Delivery Review Report and direct staff to release the final payment, uh, amount of $3,163.15 to WSCS Consulting. Could I have a mover, please? Uh, Mr. Packwood and second?
I'll second with a lot of reservations to get to down the west.
Okay. Good. Okay, comments, questions, concerns? I'll start with Counselor Dillawatt.
I think we've been up and down this, uh, road before. I just, I just wanna get this behind us, but I have reservations too.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor?
I echo exactly what the mayor and Counselor Dillawatt have, and Counselor Hunter have, have said. I, I wasn't, uh, supportive of it in, in the beginning and I, and I still am.
Counselor Hunter, you've, I think, made your, made your point.
I have reservations. I don't think we got anything near what we paid for it. We're stuck with it.
Yep. Mr. Packwood?
It's a very colorful report.
It is.
It is good covered. We'll give him credit tonight.
It is that. And Mr. Bush? Okay, you've heard the recommendation. I have a mover and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I. Uh, we have a nay, we have, um, we have one opposed. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you. Now we're going to move on. And, uh, the next item is number eight, council requires a notice of motion. Am I hearing any? Hearing done?
I do. Sorry.
Oh, sorry?
I'm sorry, I got a couple here, uh.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I have a, the North Channel Cemetery, um, we have, uh, some trees there growing up and it's getting pretty close to touching the, uh, transform next to the, uh, Johnstown Motel. Wonder if we could send, uh, somebody down there to take a peek. I could go out and get a picker truck in there to trim them off, so on and so forth. It is getting close, I was down there myself. So.
It's not looking as pretty as it used to, is it?
Well, it's getting close, no. So if we could make, uh, take a peek at that, I sure appreciate it, staff. Send staff down there on that. And, um, my second one, uh, duly chaired is, um, I thought, I thought we're gonna get this, this, uh, these docks, old docks, today it was gonna be done. I mean, we are in the end game. I'm still, I guess, I still want them installed in front of the legion by the steps. The old docks are down there. I don't want anything taken, taken apart. My feelings is we should install them, get them ready. Uh, there's gonna be voters, I, I know, I don't know why we can't hold the canteen. I mean, we got this week twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six. People are gonna be down there like crazy. So my, that's my biggest, probably my, my biggest thing is to get those old docks down there and install. I don't wanna keep putting it off to another week, another two weeks. I, I, at least they have a discussion. What if, can we do it? Will we do it? Will there be in there some people? Can, I got emails coming everywhere. Unbelievable. Of, of, I hope we get those docks in front of the legion so we can tie our boats up and go in and enjoy.
Yeah, but if I may, if I may just ask a question, Counselor. The last time you were talking about this, you had mentioned the pavilion, not the legion. Now what, which one are you talking?
Wow, it's, I guess it'd be in front of, sorry, be in front of the pavilion there with that step is.
I do, I have, I, I'd look for that step and I'd be quite hurtful. I can't find it.
Well, I'll show you sometime. Uh, Mr. Counsel, there's an old step there, you can go right here.
I'm going, I'm just trying to ask the question to, uh, Mr. Spencer. Are you familiar with it, with the step down there? Step being in that area?
There was, at one time, we did have docks that were right in front of the pavilion.
Okay.
But it is, the, I don't believe the steps are there anymore. The area that we're putting the new dock is just down, it's close to the canteen. And the reason that it's there and not over in front of the pavilion is because of the incline of the bank. There's not much room to work with there. Um, so in my personal opinion, to put them in front of the pavilion is not something that you're going to be able to do because of the incline. Um, if you want them farther down, well, the CAO and I had talked last week and we had planned to go down and meet there this week and, and have a discussion. So obviously, um, there is a report that's going to come to council on Monday night and, uh, we'll have that information in there for you.
So we can look for that Monday night then?
That's what the direction was, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. And, uh, number nine is the mayor's report. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Uh, so first of all, I'm with Counselor Dillawatt, just like to see this done. Um, so s- next, getting into the gist of my report. Uh, so first of all, I wanted to thank, um, the. So first of all, I wanted to thank the clerk Rebecca and her staff for getting the natural gas survey packages ready so quickly. I know they made a full court effort last week and had the packages all ready for, I think it was either Thursday or Friday. And appreciated that. And also thanks to Counselor Dillabon, Counselor Hunter. I know they've already done some work distributing those packages. Counselor Hunter tells me that Spencerville is done. Counselor Dillabon's done east from Granville Park to, I think it's North Channel Road. I know that Counselor Cameron and, and Deputy Mayor Deschamp are going to get involved here too. So I wanted to thank everybody for the way they jumped on that project so quickly. Just can, have to stress with everybody how important it is that Rebecca know exactly how many packages were put out. Because we're going to have to track the expressions of interest that come back. And I'm going to ask that when they come back, they, they be all kept together. And at some point, I'll be looking for six copies of each one. And I know exactly where each of the six copies are going. One copy of the package goes to Enbridge. One copy of the package will go to the Ontario Energy Board. Another copy will go to the Minister of Energy. Another copy will go to our MPP. And we'll use the second, the, the fifth and sixth copies for political lobbying purposes. So, just want to thank everybody for getting on that project. It's important, I think, that members of council know that, I've been very close discussions with Mayor Malanca of Augusta. And he intends to do a similar type of service, survey on County Road Eighteen up from the Maynard Road, up through Domville, and right up to the, to the Weir Road boundary. So I think if we get both municipalities working together with good pickup and good expressions of interest from both, we'll be in a strong position. Next item on my agenda is concerns of meeting with the auditors, which will take place on Monday, May the twenty-fifth at eleven o'clock here. The auditor will be providing his audit findings and his audit report. Now, it's been agreed that counsel as a whole will not meet with him. Deputy Mayor and I will meet with him. And I think there will be, of course, the staff, the CAO and the treasurer will be present as well. And I'm going to flag right now that I have some pretty serious concerns with the recommendation that came to counsel that we tender the audit. I have really serious concerns about doing that. I flagged those concerns with the CAO. In my opinion, the auditor works for the council. The auditor does not work for the treasurer, the auditor does not work for the staff. And I think that if this is, if, if this is going to happen, and I'm going to be, depending on my meeting with the auditor, I'm going to be possibly recommending to counsel that we reverse that decision. I think it's the wrong time to be going to tender for an audit. I am very, very worried about tendering for auditors. For a whole bunch of reasons. Now, the last thing I'll just flag, and there will be a port meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, as you all know. But as of my meeting with the port general manager on Friday, he had not yet received any applications for his port capital fund. And I don't know, Counselor Hunter, you seem to know that there'd be one coming from here.
There probably there would be, so.
Now, you might want to ride herd a bit on that one a little bit, because as March thirty-first is quickly approaching. May thirty-first is quickly approaching, March thirty-first is gone. Well, make sure to get them in. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, well, thank you. And we'll move on then to, the next item is question period. I see the gallery is packed again. Okay.
Draw a big crowd.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Hunter? Thank you. We have no closed session. So what's left is adjournment. Do I have a mover and a seconder? I have a, I have a mover with Mr. Packwood and seconded by Mr. Bush. All in favor?
Aye.
So we do adjourn at three.